Well, it is 4:00 PM on August 15th, 2023, and this is the City of Iowa City Work Session. So I want to welcome everyone in the room and all the councilors. So we're going to start with item number one, where the presentation and discussion of amendments to Title 14, zoning to improve housing choice, increase housing supply, and encourage affordability. And welcome, Ann.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. Ann Russett with Neighborhood and Development Services. Tonight, we're going to share with you a presentation that we gave to the Planning and Zoning Commission on August 2nd. I'm going to kick off the presentation with a little background, and then Kirk is going to get into some more details. Just a heads up, we have a lot to cover. This presentation is about 45 minutes. This slide shows a general timeline of how we got where we are today. It started with the city council adopting its first Affordable Housing Action Plan in 2016. The plan identified 15 action steps, including changes to zoning regulations. And the changes to the zoning regulations were the only action item from that plan that haven't been completed. In 2019, the city adopted a Fair Housing Choice Study, which reviewed impediments to accessing housing because of protected class such as race, gender, or disability, as codified in the Federal Fair Housing Act. This study included recommended actions to affirmatively further fair housing based on extensive public input, such as targeted feedback from stakeholder interviews, focus groups, a fair housing survey, public events, and a public adoption process. One of the most significant fair housing issues identified was a lack of affordable rental housing. An improved housing choice was one of the many strategies recommended to help address this issue. The city updated its Affordable Housing Action Plan in 2022 to build off previous efforts in support of affordable housing. A number of public input sessions were held, including a survey, general outreach activities, such as National Night Out, and targeted stakeholder outreach meetings and other events. And then, at the end of 2022, the city council adopted the strategic plan. One of the action steps included in the strategic plan is advancing prioritized recommendations from the 2022 Affordable Housing Action Plan. We've also had several meetings with the Planning and Zoning Commission, which started in February of '23, where we presented an initial summary of the proposed amendments that we'll be detailing tonight. In April, we presented the results of the 2022 Residential Development Analysis for the city, which shows that residential growth is not keeping pace with demand. We had additional meetings in July and August, where staff presented the proposed changes in more detail. And then, at their meeting on August 2nd, the commission recommended approval of the proposed changes, with the exception of the changes related to accessory apartments. Housing affordability is a complex issue, and there's no one solution. There are many factors that influence affordability: income, educational opportunities, cost of various necessities, such as healthcare and childcare. Housing supply also impacts affordability. And our community is growing. However, housing supply is not meeting the demand generated by the growth. When thinking about housing affordability, there is a role for zoning. Zoning regulations can restrict development and act as a barrier to creating a diverse housing stock, or can support and allow a diversity of housing options for our community. We are proposing amendments to the code that help ensure we have a zoning code that doesn't act as a barrier, but instead allows and encourages a diversity of housing types. The goals of the proposed amendments include increasing housing supply to meet demand, increasing a diversity of housing options to improve housing choice by removing barriers for housing types that generally cost less than single-family detached homes, such as townhomes, duplexes, and accessory apartments. We also want to incentivize the development of income-restricted affordable housing through density bonuses and other tools. We want to address fair housing issues to ensure persons with disabilities have equal access to housing. And we want to implement the action items that are included in our adopted plans. Again, there are multiple plans that support the proposed changes. This includes the IC 2030 Comprehensive Plan. The proposed amendments align with the adopted land use policy direction, as well as the other plans that I've already mentioned. As for the strategic plan, the proposed amendments are tied to the city's core value for racial equity, social justice, and human rights, with an effort to remove and address systemic barriers present in all facets of city government, including land use decisions. Also, Housing and Neighborhoods Impact Area Encourage encourages updating the zoning code to encourage compact neighborhoods with diverse housing types and land uses, and addressing the unique needs of vulnerable populations. And lastly, the council's action plan does recommend advancing the prioritized recommendations from the 2022 Affordable Housing Action Plan. So with that, I will turn it over to Kirk, who's going to get into the details.
Thank you, Ann. Kirk Lehman, Associate Planner. I'm going to try and be both detailed and brief, and I will do my best to make a complicated set of zoning changes simple to understand, hopefully. The way that the presentation is organized is it's similar to the staff report, where there are several proposed changes under general categories. We have five general categories, which include increasing flexibility for a range of housing types, modifying design standards, providing additional flexibility to enhance the supply of housing, creating regulatory incentives for affordable housing, and then also just addressing fair housing. When we're looking at these, each of these is going to start with a summary of the proposed amendments, and then we'll get into the analysis on amendment-by-amendment basis throughout the presentation. So it's similar to the staff report, like I said. Again, really what we're trying to do is enable the construction of housing units that are more affordable than what's currently allowed in a lot of those zones, and making sure that the zoning code is not a barrier to the construction of affordable housing. And we really see it as a complement to other programs that do more directly subsidize those low-income households within the city. So the first set of changes is related to increasing flexibility for a range of housing types, which includes four proposed changes. Again, the purpose of this is twofold. One, increase in the supply of housing. And then, two, increase in the diversity of housing types available with a focus on housing types that tend to be more affordable. And I'll provide examples of each of these as I get into my analysis as well, since it can be hard to understand it when I just describe it. So the diagrams will be helpful later on. I will also note that, for the purpose of my presentation, I try to be less technical than I am in my memo, because it is a very technical topic, but I want to make sure that folks are able to understand it. So the first change is related to allowing duplexes and up-to-two-attached single-family units more widely in lower-density residential, single-family zones. So currently, we're looking at RS5 and RS8 zones. It currently only allows these uses on corner lots. This proposed amendment would allow it in mid-block locations. The second change would be to allow townhome-style multifamily uses in higher-density, single-family zones. That is the RS12 zone. And really, what we're looking at is currently these zones allow six side-by-side attached, single-family townhomes. But if they're located on a common lot, that would not be allowed under our current zoning, because that's technically multifamily. So this would allow up to six attached units on a single lot as a multifamily use within this zone, similarly to as attached, single-family is allowed. The third change is to streamline the process by which second-story residential uses are allowed in certain commercial zones, specifically the community commercial or CC2 zone. And then also to enable the Board of Adjustment to allow ground-floor residential uses in commercial zones. So when I say Board of Adjustment review, I'm talking about a special exception. For a special exception to be approved, it must, the board must find that it meets a set of general criteria that tie to impacts to surrounding properties, and then also a set of specific criteria that this proposed amendment proposes for you. The changes that are being proposed in terms of the specific approval criteria would be, one, that it protects historic buildings and that there be a rehab plan if there's an existing historic building, that it not be allowed if it's in a zone that is historic district overlay with at least three commercial storefront characteristics, and then also that the proposed dwellings not significantly alter the overall commercial character of that subject zone. So making sure that it fits in, in a commercial context, and not overtake it. The final change is to treat assisted-group living uses more similarly to multifamily uses. So these are things like nursing homes or assisted-group living facilities. And treating them more similarly to multifamily or residential uses would allow them in more zones. It would simplify review processes in the case of the low-density, multifamily zone. And then it would also stop allowing them in the intensive commercial zone, which is more of a semi-industrial zone that we don't typically allow household living uses in. So just treating those more similarly to our residential uses. So with regards to the impacts of the first change, with regards to allowing duplex and two-attached, single-family units in lower-density residential zones, I kind of talked about our current regulations, but the 2022 Affordable Housing Action Plan did recommend expanding where these are allowed from just corner lots, specifically in lower-density zones. In terms of anticipated impacts, staff believes that the primary impacts for this are going to affect greenfield sites, where you have sites on the edge of the community, primarily because those are the areas where it's easier, easiest to plat lots that meet the standards for duplex and attached, single-family uses. But it might have some impacts on existing parcels as well, where an existing parcel might be able to accommodate new duplex uses. And I talked primarily about duplex uses in terms of impacts, because for attached, single-family, that would require lots to be re-subdivided, which would come before council for subsequent approvals as well, through the final plat process, most likely. In terms of the existing parcels that might be affected, staff looked at the maximum number of lots that could potentially accommodate duplex uses. But we do anticipate that most would remain their current uses, and that changes over time would happen through gradual conversion and/or redevelopment. What we would expect is something similar to what we've seen in the neighborhood stabilization zones, which is the RNS12 zone. These already allow mid-blocks duplexes, and they are close to the university campus. Since 1992, we've seen approximately five, single-family homes that have been demoed to build a duplex. It's about 1% of current parcels in that zone. And over that time, we've also seen more units convert from duplex to single-family than from single-family to duplex. So we'd expect gradual conversion over time. Wouldn't it be something where, all of a sudden, all these are instant duplex uses? But in terms of the number of parcels that could be affected, up to a maximum of about 2,900 lots could accommodate duplex uses, in that they are the approximate lot size that could accommodate them. About 170 of them are in the university impact area, which is that area that's closest to the university campus. And then, up to another additional 2,200 lots could potentially accommodate duplex uses with lot sizes that are proposed in a subsequent amendment that I'll talk about later. But approximately 90 of those are located in the university impact area. It's also a challenging situation, where historically, we have allowed duplex uses in many of these zones. But that amount has decreased, especially after we adopted standards that required it to, required duplexes to be on corner lots. So we're really looking at trying to encourage alternative housing types that are more affordable, such as duplexes, compared to detached, single-family uses. Now, where those lots are located, again, you'll see the map before you that shows lots that might allow duplex uses that are currently single-family. Green lots are those that currently allow duplexes. You can see that they're scattered throughout the city. They're special, I mean, they're located on corner lots. So especially where you see lots of dense street networks, there tend to be more of those. Yellow areas are areas that would allow duplexes if mid-block duplexes were allowed. Generally, you'll see that these are outside of the city core, but it's a lot of these zones. But a lot of the lots in the city core are actually too small by just allowing mid-block duplexes. The orange areas are those that would allow mid-block, would allow duplexes if mid-block duplexes were allowed, and the duplex lot sizes were reduced, as proposed in a subsequent amendment. You'll see a lot of those are located in older portions of the city. So you'll see some in the north side, the Morningside, Twain, Longfellow, and Oakwoods areas. And then the gray areas are where they're not allowed, because they're too small, or because it's a zone that doesn't allow them. So again, whether a duplex use is established is guided by a number of factors. We're in a challenging market environment for that, with high interest rates and high construction costs. There are also other factors that aren't considered in this map, which includes things like the current use, property values, covenants, owner desires for their lots, those sorts of things. So there's a number of factors that go into whether or not a lot might become a duplex use. The second proposed amendment is allowing townhome-style multifamily uses in higher-density, single-family zones. So as I noted, up to six attached, single-family uses are allowed in these zones. But that is, they must be on independent lots. This would allow it on a common lot, which has the same look from the streets and can be more affordable as well, since they can share things like water service. So it can reduce the cost for that, that housing type. In terms of anticipated impacts, we don't expect it to have a large impact on the number of units that's produced, because it is similar to a use that's already allowed within this zone. However, it does add flexibility for housing types that are allowed, and also in the arrangement of lots within that zoning district. And so, as an example of an attached, single-family home versus a multifamily townhome, from the street, they look almost identical. If I didn't have these labels on the images below, the one on the left is attached, single-family. The one on the right is townhome-style, multifamily. The one on the left is currently allowed, the one on the right is not. So this would allow both of these building types. The next change would be to streamline residential uses in commercial zones. So again, second-story residential in the CC2 zone currently requires a special exception. So that's an additional process, time, and resources that's required for that use. And multifamily uses are currently not allowed on the ground floor in almost all commercial zones, other than in some very specific circumstances in central business zones. So the proposed amendment would change that a little bit. It would simplify the process to allow mixed-use buildings with residential above and commercial below in important commercial centers, since a lot of those are Zone CC2. As an example of that, we call that a vertically-mixed-use building. So the building on the right has an example of commercial on the bottom floor, residential above. That's one thing that would be simplified. The second would be to allow the Board of Adjustment to approve multifamily buildings in most commercial zones by special exception. Again, it must meet those specific and general approval criteria, which would help maintain the commercial character of these zones, and also protect historic buildings within these zones. The reason that we're proposing this is because it facilitates horizontally-mixed-use development. So that is a case where you have a single lot, where you might have a commercial building on one side of that lot and a residential building on the other side. That's something that's currently not allowed under our zoning code. You would need different lots, you would need different zoning districts for those, or you would need an OPD for it. So this would allow, you could imagine a situation where you have a large lot, big-box commercial store that has a large parking lot. And without re-subdividing, it could potentially be approved for multifamily uses in underutilized parking areas. So that's kind of the horizontally-mixed-use aspect of it. In terms of areas that are affected by that, areas in blue are those that allow multifamily uses by right currently. So they're multifamily zones primarily. Areas in green are those that allow second-story, multifamily uses, as long as certain standards are met. The proposed amendment would allow first-story, commercial uses by special exception. The areas in yellow currently require Board of Adjustment approval or a special exception to allow second-story residential uses. With the proposed amendment, that would be allowed as long as certain standards are met. So it'd be administrative approval. And then finally, the areas in orange are tied to the previous amendment that I discussed. So those are areas that would allow townhome-style, multifamily in addition to single-family townhomes. And those are the RS12 zones. The final change within this category would be to treat assisted-group living uses more similarly to multifamily uses. So they are currently not treated as household living uses, and so they are allowed in fewer residential zoning districts. It is generally a best practice to treat assisted-living facilities like similarly-sized, household living uses. So that's really what led to this proposed amendment. What it would do is simplify the process to allow assisted living in lower-density, multifamily zones, and allow assisted living in zones that currently allow multifamily, which is primarily commercial zones. Again, it would also no longer allow it in the intensive, commercial, or semi-industrial zone. In terms of areas affected, the green areas are those that allow assisted-group living uses if certain standards are met. Yellow areas allow them with Board of Adjustment approval. With the proposed amendment, they'd be allowed administratively if certain standards are met. And then the orange areas are those that do not allow them currently, but would allow them under the proposed amendment. And the red areas currently allow these, but would no longer allow them. Those are the CI1 zones. The second set of changes is looking at design standards. And there are three changes proposed as part of this. The first would be to eliminate two, multifamily site development standards to help provide flexibility and also reduce cost for construction. Those two standards are specifically that currently, most multifamily group living uses not built of masonry or stucco must have a two-foot base of masonry, stucco, or dressed concrete. This would eliminate that requirement. And then, in addition, it would eliminate the requirement that facade materials, where there's a change in the wall material around a corner, it has to be wrapped three feet around the corner. This would eliminate that requirement. The second proposed change would be to adjust standards to allow duplexes and up-to-two-attached, single-family uses in mid-block locations. Currently, the way that our design standards are structured, it requires that garages and entrances for duplexes be located on different streets. If we're allowing mid-block duplexes, obviously, that would need to be changed. But it does have a great point of trying to limit the impacts of garages. So we do propose a couple additional standards as well to help reduce the impact of garages on a streetscape in these low-density residential zones. So it would limit garages to 60% of the facade, and it would limit it to 20 feet per street. That is, you could have two, single-wide garages, or one, double-wide garage, per street. If you're on, I'll show you some examples as we get into it, too. I've got some images for you. But it would also allow more if it was set back 15 feet to prevent it from dominating the street. So that's similar to form-based zones. In addition, we will require that they utilize rear alleys if they are existing. The third change is to simplify a waiver for townhome-style, multifamily, specifically as it relates to a parking setback required in the zone. That's a very specific change, and I'll discuss that in more detail when I have a diagram up, because it's hard to discuss without that diagram. So first, eliminated the two, multifamily site development standards. This was something that was brought up in the 2016 Affordable Housing Action Plan that recommended amending these standards. In terms of anticipated impacts, we really are looking at trying to retain standards that more directly address visual interest. So most standards would still be in effect, including things like building entrances in scale, balconies in exterior stairways, other building material standards, mechanical equipment standards, and architectural style standards in the central planning district. It would just eliminate those two standards that I discussed previously, that, that two-foot masonry base and the three-foot wraparound corners. The goal is really to reduce the cost of construction and increase flexibility without really impacting that visual interest. So as an example of a building that wouldn't be allowed currently, this image on the left wouldn't be allowed, doesn't have a durable base. So it would allow buildings like this to exist when they currently couldn't exist under our zoning code. The second change would be to adjust the design standards for duplexes and attached, single-family in low-density residential zones. So again, currently, the entrances and garages have to face different streets. But this really facilitates that proposed Amendment A. So I already discussed how this helps avoid garages that dominate streetscapes. All other design standards would continue to apply, and we would really expect the outcomes to be similar to what you see with an OPD. So many of these sample images that I have on here are from our existing building code, or zoning code, excuse me, as ways that would prevent it from dominating a streetscape. And I've got a laser pointer that I wanted to make sure I got up. So in terms of what that might look like in practice, this upper-left is the only one that's currently allowed, where you have garages facing different streets. That would still be allowed under the proposed zoning code, but they would be restricted to 20 feet, unless they're set back more than 15 feet. To the upper-right, you'll see an example of a stacked duplex, where they can share a double-wide garage. But they would be restricted to 20 feet if it wasn't set back 15 feet from the street. The lower-left, it would be required to utilize an alley if an alley was present, and we would not restrict the amount of garage space that would be facing an alley. It's only those facing streets. So it could be more than 20 feet. And this image on the lower-right, in this case, the garages are set back 15 feet. So you could have two, double-wide garages, where they wouldn't dominate the streetscape. But it would still be restricted by that 60% of the facade could only be garages. So a number of different standards. It still allows a lot of flexibility, but it would allow those mid-block locations. The next change is regarding the parking setback for townhome-style, multifamily. This is really paired with standards that are trying to regulate townhome-style, multifamily more similarly to attached, single-family uses, since they look almost identical. And currently, parking for townhome-style, multifamily has to be set back 15 feet of building depth from the street. So for the most part, that's not a problem. And I can show you with this diagram. So this black here is the building. You have the front facing a front street to the north. To the south, you have a rear-loaded, rear-loaded garages with driveways, and then you have an alley. The 15-foot setback, you can see, is this orange line here from the front. The goal is to make sure that you don't have parking in front of the building. But in a case like this, where you have six, attached, single-family units, it also creates a building depth line on the west side. So it wouldn't allow parking within that 15 feet of building depth, which is something that wouldn't be required for attached, single-family. What we're proposing is to, that, that can be waived currently by a minor modification. Requires additional process, additional time. What we're proposing is that that be allowed, to be waived just with an administrative approval for specifically townhome-style, multifamily on side streets. So again, it's a very specific example of ways that we're trying to regulate uses more similarly. But what it does is simplify the process. So it does maintain the intent of the current regulation, which is not allowing that reduction on the front street. The next set of changes is tied to providing additional flexibility to enhance the supply of housing. This started with three proposed amendments, one of which is amendments related to accessory dwelling units. The Planning and Zoning Commission has recommended deferral to facilitate neighborhood consultation regarding that specific item. So that's going to be removed from what will be brought before you when this is considered. But the other two changes are reductions in lot sizes and widths for detached and attached, single-family and duplex uses in some zones. The specific zones that would be impacted would be RS5 zones for both, single-family detached and duplex uses. In the RS8 zone, it would reduce it for duplex uses and attached, single-family uses. In the RNS12 zone, it would only affect single-family detached uses with rear access. And then, in the RM12 and RM20 zone, it's only tied to lot width. So it's just bringing those standards more into line with other, single-family standards. The other is tied to increase in the bedroom limit for missing-middle housing outside of the university impact area. So currently, there are bedroom caps on multifamily and duplex and single-family attached units. This is proposing for, for units outside of the university impact area that the number of bedrooms in that bedroom cap be increased by one. So for multifamily, it would increase from three to four. For duplex and single-family attached, it would be increased from four to five. The goal is really to accommodate a wider variety of housing types and family types within those, because currently, single-family detached is the primary housing type that's allowed for those large families. So with regards to lot size reductions, this really came about because a lot of our 19, or pre-1962 lots are currently non-conforming. It is also best practice to reduce minimum lot sizes that can perpetuate patterns of economic and demographic segregation. And it's best practice to, to have as much of the lots within your city comply with the zoning code. So in terms of the anticipated impacts of reducing lot sizes, it would bring many non-conforming lots to compliance. Approximately 1,600 lots, to be specific, that are detached, single-family in the RS5 and RNS12 zone. It's about 85% of non-conforming lots within those zones. It would still leave about 300 lots that remain non-conforming. But it also provides more flexibility to the arrangement of lots in new subdivisions, and also allows the incorporation of smaller lots, which can also reduce the land costs of those units. So as an example of that, assuming that land is $5 a square foot, and it's likely higher than that, that could reduce the price of land for a new, single-family home, than that, that could reduce the price of land for a new single-family home zoned RS5 by approximately $10,000. And in terms of conforming lots, the image on the screen is an example of some units in the Morningside neighborhood that are zoned RS5. They're currently non-conforming. They have a 50-foot lot width. They're 7,000-square-foot lots. In an RS5 zone, that would not be allowed currently if you were building a new RS5 zone, so it would be allowing those small lot buildings within RS5 zones. And in addition, it would allow duplexes on smaller lots. I did discuss that previously under 1A, so I'm not going to repeat myself there. But in terms of those single-family detached lots that become non-conforming or that become conforming, the green areas are those that are conforming. So you would expect that's most of the city, but you do see in some older areas such as Morningside, Twain, Plum Grove, Manville Heights, the South District, you see a number of non-conforming lots in yellow. Those are lots that would become conforming under the proposed change. You'll also notice a few red lots that are scattered through the oldest areas of town, including Towncrest and the North Side. Those would remain non-conforming, but it is a pretty substantial reduction in the number of non-conforming lots. And the other change regarding bedroom limits, again, there currently are caps for duplexes attached single-family and multifamily uses, which does limit where large households can live. Specifically, it forces them to live in single-family housing or it forces them to cram together, since single-family housing is the only housing type that does not have a bedroom limit. So the 2022 Affordable Housing Action Plan did recommend that we look at these standards, specifically outside of the university-impact area, which is within that area bounded in red. So again, that area closest to the university would be outside of that, and it would increase the number of bedrooms allowed by one for multifamily duplex and attached single-family uses. But it would retain that bedroom cap for the university-impact area, which is largely where the reason that the bedroom cap was originated within that area. The next set of standards are tied to regulatory incentives for affordable housing. And the rest of the standards that I've spoken about so far are specifically related to choice, supply, and flexibility in addition to the cost of housing. This one is specifically related to creating regulated affordable housing. That means that they would be income-restricted and rent and sales price-restricted as well, and they would need to meet income and rent levels that are guided by current practice within the city for affordable housing units. The two changes that we would -- or the regulatory incentives that we would propose would be creating a density bonus for affordable housing units in conventional zoning districts. So what we're proposing is a 20% density bonus where 20% of units are affordable for 20 years. It would also have some additional regulatory flexibility specifically related to setbacks in height if that was needed to make an affordable housing project work. Otherwise, that wouldn't be allowed. The other change would be to eliminate minimum parking requirements for affordable housing units, and those affordable housing units would have to be affordable for 20 years at least. So both of these provide indirect subsidies for affordable housing units. The minimum parking requirement would not affect any market-rate units that are included in affordable housing development. So to give you an idea of what that looks like, an example of an affordable housing project or a regular housing project in an RS5 zone, the low-density single-family residential zone, let's say you have a 20-acre zone. It would allow five dwelling units per acre, so that would allow approximately 70 homes with room for streets, with rooms for stormwater management. All of those would be market rate. If the 20% density bonus was applied, it would allow approximately 84 homes within that, of which 17 would need to be affordable. And really, what it does is provide that voluntary incentive to provide affordable units that are regulated by the city. As a multifamily example, let's say there's a 33,000-square-foot lot that would currently allow 12 units in an RM12 zone, all of which would be market rate. If they took advantage of a density bonus, it would allow an additional three units that must be affordable, so it would be 15 units on that 33,000-square-foot lot. In terms of the way that this would operate, it would operate similar to what is currently included in our form-based zones. So it'd be administered during our typical reviews with the goal of having these additional units help offset the cost of affordable housing. And this is one of the more common affordable housing incentives that you see in other For the minimum parking requirements, we do currently have this standard in riverfront crossings and form-based zones, so this would just expand it to conventional zones as well. And we have had past plans that have suggested waiving parking requirements as well for all affordable housing units. As an example, let's go back to that 20-acre RS5 development where there are 70 homes that would require a minimum of 140 parking spaces. With the affordable housing incentive, with 84 homes, that would require 134 parking spaces. For the multifamily development, the 12 units would require 24 parking spaces under our conventional development regulations. With the affordable housing incentive, I would allow 15 units with 24 spaces. So again, the only units that don't have a parking, minimum parking standard are those affordable units. And that also helps indirectly offset the cost of providing that affordable housing. And we also see this one is also supporting many of the city's efforts that are trying to encourage alternative modes of transportation, including things like our two-year free fare, just trying to get people out of cars and into alternative vehicles. The final set of standards are related to addressing for housing issues, and we have two proposed amendments for this. One is creating a request, a process to request reasonable accommodations. The second is to reclassify community service long-term housing as residential use. So with regards to that first one, the city is obligated under federal law to provide accommodations for persons with disabilities, but we currently don't have a clear process for doing that. And it is best practice to provide that as an administrative relief. So really, what we would propose is creating a new process by which they may apply. It'd be a simple, comprehensive process to evaluate all reasonable accommodations requests, and it would use the same approval criteria. They would also reduce the need to call attention to the disability of a person making a request. So in some cases, under our current code, for example, wheelchair ramp, if you want to put that on the front of your house and you can't meet setback requirements, it may require a minor modification, which requires notifying adjacent property owners essentially of your disability. So this would provide a more discreet process, confidential process, that would apply in all cases. The second change is reclassifying community service long-term housing use, which currently includes housing with supportive services for persons with disabilities, and it has to be owned by a nonprofit or public agency. Generally, it's best practice to regulate housing for persons with disabilities, like similarly-sized household living uses. In terms of the anticipated impacts, it would generally simplify the process by which these uses would be allowed, but it would also eliminate the way in which these are treated differently, such as increased density and decreased parking, which is currently allowed for these uses. But it does require less administrative burden. The proposed amendment also allows accessory supportive services that serve residents of a building within residential zones more generally. So it would be like any other amenity provided to residents of a housing complex, whether you have a pool, whether you have a gym. But the minute it starts serving outside folks, then it would be treated as a commercial use. But it is specifying that supportive services are an accessory use to residential uses. In this case, it would create two properties that are, that would become non-conforming. Those are both owned by shelter house, and they would become legal non-conforming uses, so they would be able to continue as they are, but they wouldn't be able to expand. We have discussed this with shelter house leadership, and they're not as concerned about that as long as they can continue as they are. And it would allow these uses more widely in more context, so allow them in a more neighborhood context as well. So in this case, you know, I've said that trying to reduce nonconformities is an important goal of the zoning code. In this cases, in this case, we do believe that addressing this fair housing issue outweighs that need. In terms of amendments removed, I did just want to touch briefly on accessory dwelling units and what we've proposed. That'll come before you in the future, like I noted. Generally, we view ADUs as a great way to increase housing supply without substantially impacting the appearance of a neighborhood. And all of the changes that we're recommending are based on the Johnson County's Livable Communities Housing Action Committee, which is part of their task force on addressing affordable, accessible housing. And it's also based largely on the AARP model ordinance that they provide, because they see that as a great way to allow people to age in their house. So the proposed changes include things like allowing ADUs in any zone that allows household living uses on any lot with up to two dwellings, removing the requirement that one unit be owner-occupied, removing limits on the number of bedrooms and residents, increasing the allowable size of the units, removing the requirement for an additional parking space, and simplifying design requirements. So really, what we're trying to do is remove those barriers that we've seen, and that was also proposed as part of the 2022 Affordable Housing Action Plan, especially as a large portion of the households in Iowa City are single-person households, and we expect that number to continue increasing. It will affect a number of parcels. It could, there are 13,000 that are currently eligible for these uses. We've seen 52 ADUs in the last 30 years or so, of which about a third were in the Peninsula Neighborhood. Those would continue to be eligible for ADUs under the proposed amendments, but would allow up to an additional 1,400 new units potentially by expanding the zones and uses to which they're allowed to be accessory. And then similarly to duplex, it would expand the number of units allowed by about 3,100 by removing the owner occupancy requirement. Now, many of those are in the university-impact areas, so that's something to keep in mind. But we do expect it to be like duplexes, where it would be a gradual development of these uses. We also see this as supporting the city's sustainability goals by increasing the supply of housing, especially in those existing neighborhoods that have good access to amenities.
I do see Counselor Dunn hand raised.
Yeah, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes. So just a quick clarification on the existing situation part of this slide. I'm looking at your stat for 36% of households in Iowa City are single-person. Can you talk to me more about how household is defined in this context?
Yeah, household is defined as any person living within a dwelling unit. So a dwelling unit is an independent group of rooms intended for a household. I mean, they're kind of alternate changes. So if you have a duplex unit, that would be, could accommodate two households. If you had an extended family and they all lived within one dwelling unit, that would be a single household. Could be a family household, or you have, with kids, if you have a brother with, living with you, that's a household. If you have roommates living with you, that's a household.
So the roommates are, so like, if you have roommates, they're all considered a household, whether or not they're sharing all the space or a specific space? It's the total unit, the collective, right?
For the purpose of that figure, that's derived from census standards. The zoning code standards might be a little different.
Okay, thank you.
But you'll see this in the future, once P&amp;Z discusses it on October 4th, is what we're anticipating. It does affect a number of units. The green areas are those that currently allow ADUs if their owner occupied. Under the proposed amendment, it would allow them if their renter occupied. The yellow areas are new zones that would allow ADUs or they're duplexes that would allow ADUs where they were not currently allowed or were not previously allowed. So in terms of the way that we came up with many of these recommendations, we really based a lot of this on national best practices, which looked at other jurisdictions to identify what was working and what wasn't. And we really focused especially on the American Planning Association's Equity and Zoning Policy Guide. That includes a number of best practices, like allowing a broader range of building forms, lot sizes and lot widths, reducing minimum lot sizes, allowing ADUs without a public hearing, treated assisted group living, and also supportive services for persons with disabilities like residential uses, then also allowing administrative approval of reasonable accommodations. But we also looked at things like the National Association of Counties, which provides specialized recommendations based on the characteristics of your county. So for Johnson County, we are a high-growth, high-cost county, for which they recommend making it easier to build small, moderately-priced houses, making the development process simpler and shorter, and expanding vouchers or income supports for low-income renters. That includes things like affordable housing support. And then also for the AARP as it relates to accessory dwelling units, really, they do identify things that have a very chilling effect on the development of accessory dwelling units, including things like owner occupancy requirements, parking requirements, and then some other things that don't apply to Iowa City's zoning code. And we also made sure that they were consistent with the comprehensive plan. So really, a lot of these changes that we're bringing before you are changes that can be made with the current comprehensive plan that the city has. So within the vision statement, one of our vision goals is creating an attractive and affordable housing for all people, housing that is the foundation of healthy, safe, and diverse neighborhoods throughout our city. In addition to a number of relevant strategies and goals, such as ensuring a mix of housing types, encouraging developments on smaller lots, et cetera, supporting infill development and small lot development. And we also made sure that we were consistent with the future land use map, which is included within the comprehensive plan. So the future land use map shows what different land uses might be appropriate in different areas. The lowest-density zone outside of the rural residential areas allow dwelling units of up, or allow a density of up to eight dwelling units per acre, so we took that into account as we were developing our proposals. And it also notes that this should account for a variety of housing types. We also tied this to the many planning processes that have happened over the past several years that Ann talked about at the beginning of this. We've also gotten a lot of public outreach as part of this, so including a number of pieces of correspondence and individuals who testified at the commission in support and against the proposed amendments. All of the written correspondence in the final commission meeting minutes will be included in your council packet. And the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of the proposed amendments, with the exception of those related to accessory dwelling units as discussed by Ann previously. In terms of next steps, we would anticipate setting a public hearing on September 5th with the goal of a public hearing being held on September 19th. That would also be the first consideration, so the second and third considerations would be held in October under our proposed timeline. So with that, I know that it's a lot of information. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, but that concludes my presentation. So thank you.
Well, thank you. That's a lot of great information that you presented. Council is our opportunity to ask questions, seeking clarification. I would remind us that we are, we want to hold any positions on this matter until we have closed the public hearing.
Is it okay if I give a quick comment?
Absolutely.
Awesome, thank you, Mayor. I, first of all, just want to thank you for an excellent presentation. This made a very technical proposal make a lot more sense in my mind, and I hope that more people in the community will take the time to both listen to this recording and/or listen to the recording from the Planning and Zoning Commission. My only comment is that I would love to follow up with you for a further discussion about the ADU proposal. Otherwise, you know, just very appreciative of your time and the rest of staff's time in getting this put before us. Thank you.
I have a couple of very technical questions, maybe, but thank you, Kirk. Yeah, excellent job, Ann and Kirk and all of your staff for pulling this together for us. Okay, so the, and I tried to make notes in order of the presentation, probably should have just interrupted you. So on the, what is proposed to be allowed for multifamily that is currently only single-family attached, right? Could you have one building that is then still in a horizontal condominium regime? So it could be owned separately but oriented vertically? So you could still have separated ownership but on a common lot, so that for development purposes, it could be, I think, easier to develop that multi-unit building?
Yeah, that's typically what we see for attached townhome-style multifamily. The thing that wouldn't be allowed is you couldn't stack townhomes. So the way that we wrote the code is you couldn't have, you know, a townhome with a unit on top and then a townhome with a unit on top. That would not be allowed.
Got it.
You've got to be side by side, but it could be a condominium regime.
Okay, perfect, thank you. And then for the, no, you answered that question about the smaller lot sizes and what that would mean for like the RS5 then becomes six units, right? If it was five units per acre and you have the 20% affordability incentive, sorry, 20% density bonus as an affordability incentive, that would, that's what that translates to, right? I mean, you gave examples with multiple lots, but just in my brain, trying to think one acre, okay. How did you arrive at the 20%, again, still for the density bonus and the affordable housing incentive? How did you arrive at the 20% density bonus and the 20 years duration?
Sure. So the 20 years is based on, partially on current practice for a lot of our programs at the city. A lot of them use that 20-year mark, and that's also if you're doing a vehicle that's recorded with the deed, they expire after 21 years unless they're removed or renewed. So that also factors into it. In terms of the 20%, it's, you know, it's more art than science, I suppose, I would say. It seems consistent with what some other communities have done. Some do higher. A lot of them actually do mandatory affordable housing, which is something we can't do under Iowa law, but it's on the higher end of what is standard in other similar situations. It also seems like it's low enough where it would maintain compatibility with adjacent uses as well. So like I said, more science, or more art than science.
That makes sense. In the example of the long-term supported housing, you gave the example of those two shelter house projects. The proposed change would expand where they can be built, but it said except CI1?
Yes.
Okay, so what did you mean by that?
So what I mean by that is it's similar to assisted group living, where currently this use is allowed in the CI1 zone. We typically don't see that as a zone that's appropriate for household living uses, and so it seems like we should treat housing for persons with disabilities similarly.
Okay, great, so that would become a not allowed use in that zone?
Correct.
Got it, okay. Those were all my questions, actually.
I also wanted to say thank you to everyone. This is, as I was talking to somebody before the meeting, this is actually one of the reasons I was excited to run for council, is to take a look at some of these long-term zoning issues that have created inequalities over the decades. So it's really cool to be able to be digging really into this now, and so thank you for all that hard work, and thank you to the Planning and Zoning Commission for doing the first pass through this and collecting some of that input. I think I had a similar question. You may have kind of answered it, that Counselor Burgess had about the 20 years. Is that something that you had mentioned? I didn't catch the last part of your answers. The first part was, because we've kind of done it that way in the past, but was there something in the second part of your answer that would prohibit us from something in the second part of your answer that would prohibit us from taking a closer look at that when it comes back before the council?
You, you could look at that. With recorded, with something that's recorded with the deed, it expires after 21 years, and it has to be renewed. So it, it is generally simpler process to do a 20-year requirement with something like that.
Can that be worked around?
It could be.
Thank you.
Only because you ended on the 20-year affordability period. I guess it's a bigger question. So what happens at the end of 20 years, as we've been doing in the Riverfront Crossing area for affordable units? What is our plan if we, if, for the, for those units that would go regular market rent? What is our plan at that point? Because they're going to be gone. I mean, that's, that's the real fear, that these will be gone. So what is the plan for perpetuity, I guess, in a way?
Sure, so I can't give you an exact answer to that. What I can tell you is that, you know, focusing on maintaining affordability is an important part of the affordable housing puzzle. I believe that, the thing I was planning in zoning that asked me about in perpetuity affordable housing, my understanding is that, that is something that really puts a chilling effect on using these. So these incentives are just that voluntary incentives. You want to make sure that the cost to, to the developer is something that is, provides enough return on investment that they will utilize the incentives. As far as making sure that those voluntary units remain affordable, that would be something that we'd have to look at at that time.
And Ann can go in as well?
I'm sorry, I just wanted to add something to that. Kirk is right, we want incentives that anyone would use voluntary, voluntarily, even for-profit developers, but we anticipate that more commonly, these incentives will be used by nonprofit housing developers that are already building affordable housing, and it would be helpful to their projects financially, and they would get a bonus. And those are projects that would, that as nonprofit housing developers would be maintained as affordable units in perpetuity.
Do we have, this is for either one of you, but just going along with this thread, do we have any buildings where they're aging out of that agreement? Like, to the mayor's point about 20 years, and then what happens? Do we have any current examples or, or near historic, near historical examples of what has happened when 20 years is aged?
Yeah, I, I don't have any current examples. I know that community development staff maintains a list of that, and tracks what, where units are in their affordability cycle. I know that often those units apply for additional affordable housing funds. That is something that happens frequently.
Yeah, it was just
So it really depends on the circumstances, and I don't have any current examples of that.
Yeah, I mean, it would just, it would be interesting to me to think of tracking those who have been perhaps in place for, you know, who are long-term renters for the affordable housing, and what that shift over to it becoming market rate might mean for them. But then also, eh, you'll have to come back to me, I lost it. So, at any rate, I just think it would be an interesting, well, not just interesting, actually vitally important for these community members, for us to kind of have an awareness of where they might go. And as you say, there might be applications for, you know, funding to continue to maintain them, their affordability, but that's all contingent on whether, you know, that landlord or that property owner wants to go that distance, right? So, yeah, anyway, I'm just kind of musing out loud.
Is there any way, along the line of, if someone is currently renting and that, you know, it's the 20th year where it's going to lapse, is there any way to figure out how that household could remain there for an additional period of time with those affordable rates?
Well, you, I imagine that would be done through illegal means. I can't, I'm not sure how that would happen.
Well, I'm referring to if we can alter how we're
Allow them to stay there if they have been there.
Yeah, I mean, because Counselor Sean just asked if it, if we can, you know, change that 20-year language a little bit. And so I was just wondering if there is a way to consider at the 20th year, when someone is actually living there, you know, where they can remain there with those affordable rates until they move at some point in time. But you don't have to answer that now, just something I'm thinking about out loud. The other question that I have is related to, with the shelter house example that you gave. Can you speak to why you always suggest or want it to be with nonprofit or governmental ownership? And the reason, as far as, you said it was going to be for nonprofit?
No, so our current zoning code regulates housing for persons with disabilities owned by a public or private nonprofit with supportive services as a long-term housing community service use, or community service long-term housing use. So those, that was adopted, I think, in 2016, maybe? I'm not sure why that specific definition was reached.
So then?
Yeah, and what we would be doing is eliminating that use category.
Okay.
As a distinct use category.
Okay. And so, and whatever you're replacing it with, because there's a lot of information, trying to track it all, but is there anything that will have that requirement that it's a not-for-profit or governmental?
No, so it would be, it would be considered like any other residential use, based on the building it's in.
Got it.
So if it's, like the two shelter house examples would be considered multifamily. You could also imagine a situation where you have, you know, a couple of single-family homes built in a small neighborhood that provides a, a similar set of services to residents within that neighborhood. And that would be a similar situation, but those would be considered single-family. So it really depends on the zoning code designation that's residential household living.
So the change would allow for private, for-profit housing developer, developers to actually?
Yeah, and they could do it currently, but the supportive services would, they couldn't provide supportive services essentially. They could provide housing, just not those services in the same way, if that makes sense. So it's kind of a, a special category that was created as part of the Fuse Project, the Shelter House Housing First Project, and that was really what the use was created for. And this would just be saying supportive services can actually be accessory to any residential use, and this is just a residential use. It's not a special category of use.
Okay. And only because I want to make sure that I understand this correctly. So the, the language of someone who's providing supportive services, they can provide this no matter if they're for-profit, not-for-profit, moving forward.
Yes.
Thank you.
Kirk, do we, do we have any idea in areas where we redevelop? How many existing housing units have been lost through that redevelopment process?
Are you referring to Riverfront Crossing specifically?
Well, that would certainly be a large area where this would take place, you know, where we see apartment buildings, whatever, whatever existing buildings exist on the parcel are demolished. Do we keep a, a record of how many housing units have been lost through redevelopment?
I don't believe so.
I mean, the reason I ask is, I, I would think typically those houses or those units are affordable. At least, that's often the case. You know, we see redevelopment in areas where, you know, land values are relatively lower, and so the housing may be more affordable. I mean, it's, it's been a subject that's been coming up on some of our projects, where there's this sense that we're, we're building new, we're building more supply, and at the same time, losing affordable housing as a result of the process.
Just to
If I may, I'll offer this commentary. One of the reasons we feel we are legally justified in requiring affordable housing or a fee in lieu in the Riverfront Crossing areas is exactly for the point you raised, that oftentimes, we are losing affordable housing units, not because they're mandated to be affordable, but just because they're older housing stock and as a result are cheaper. So I, I think the premise of your question is right on base.
Yeah, and I was just going to add to that. From a regulatory standpoint, I think it's, it's really confusing or almost counterintuitive because when we talk about affordability, I think how we're thinking about it is like, can a person who wants to live there, live there and afford it, right? And in the context of, of development, it's like, the, you know, there are standards as to what that will be, can be, that doesn't necessarily mean, as people have raised in our meetings before, right? Like affordable, based on a percentage of area median income, isn't necessarily affordable, right? Like that, and so when we talk about like, how do we keep rents the same, or how could we know if an older home that, that costs less to live in, you know, is replaced by something newer that costs more to live in? I mean, so much of that is, is information that we don't even have access to, right? Like, we don't get leases, we don't, we have to, you know, collect all of this, or USG helps us collect information about what landlords are actually charging and that kind of thing. So I just think, trying to kind of separate that regulatory, what we can control over, you know, that's based on these standards that we can define, but it's very like aggregated and, and not specific to, you know, a particular family who's in a certain situation, who's in a certain unit, and the individual, you know, agreements between a landowner and a tenant, for example, like, because we, we have, we're really restricted in how we can affect the latter.
I would also add that with these proposed amendments, we're not anticipating wide-scale redevelopment. You know, we're not looking at creating a new Riverfront Crossings district that's specifically intended for redevelopment. Really, what we're trying to do is allow additional units within, within the neighborhood framework that we have, and really try to reduce the costs of construction as they are. So that's what a lot of these amendments are trying to do. And also, in new development, to provide flexibility in the way that we can provide more affordable housing types, additional housing diversity, and hopefully increase the supply in the process. So that's what I would say.
One of the things that I was actually struck by, and it's been sort of, is the, the framing for these extensive and thoughtful amendments is that you're trying to address so many different things, right? It's not simply affordability, it's also about housing stock, which is, you know, and, and how do we kind of marry these disparate pieces, so that there's more of a coherent sense? And so, it sounds to me, as you were going through everything, you know, I was kind of bearing that in mind. It's not simply one component, but it's how, how did all these pieces fit together in some ways to, to increase livability ultimately? So I just, I wanted to say that I thought you were trying to thread a needle, because this is a really difficult process, but, and you have to attend, sort of, and you have to attend to sort of different components of it. How are you dealing with neighborhood, you know, sort of that neighborhood framework, as you say, while creating more housing stock, while also attending the fact that we're such an expensive place to live? How do we make this more conducive for developers and affordable for people to live? So, and to do it all through these very technical means, I just appreciate it. I need to digest much more, but I just wanted to, to say that, that one of the things that I was very much struck by was that you were not focused simply on one component, but really looking at, here's the big picture, and what this could mean for us decades to come, and how we are going to grow, and in a way that, that can help the community. So, thank you.
And maybe one more really big picture question for, for you and/or Ann. We've been talking about a comprehensive, comprehensive plan review, right? A larger comprehensive plan review and amendment over the next several years. So how, how would you see these proposed changes kind of fitting into that, impacting that? Like what, because my sense from your, how you laid this out was that these are not radical, this is like what we can do now with what we have, knowing where we are, like you said, not any big redevelopment. But just, can you kind of like balance those or talk about that bigger picture for us?
Ann, do you want to cover that?
Yeah.
I mean, I, I can give my opinion as well, but I'll let Ann talk first.
Well, yeah, I think you're right. I feel like we are limited in what we can do based on the current policy direction, in terms of, you know, what uses can be allowed where, and how we can be flexible in allowing a diversity of housing types based on our current adopted plans. And I think when we do look at those plans more comprehensively, that's something that we're going to have to evaluate as a community to see if, if we need to go further, if there are more things that we can do to address housing supply, housing diversity. And that's going to have to be a community conversation that's held when we update those plans, so.
Thank you.
But that's definitely going to be part of that process.
Yeah, and not only is this something that we can do now, but this is something that, you know, a lot of these, or some of these changes have been proposed since 2016, and it's really built over time through those previous planning processes that we've had, including the analysis of impediments to fair housing choice, or the Fair Housing Choice Study, our 2022 Affordable Housing Action Plan. There's lots of input as part of the strategic plan as well, the council's strategic plan. So we see this as, as a continuation of those within our existing comprehensive plan framework. Additional, there's probably additional things that we can do for affordable housing in the future with, as we look at the comprehensive plan, but like Ann said, it's, it's something that will come together as a community to discuss at that time.
Don't look like there are any more questions, thanks to both of you.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to move on to item number two, clarification of agenda items. We're going to go to item number three, information packet discussion. We'll start with August 3rd.
I think IP-2, which was the NDS Annual Report, actually gives like a really good additional context, maybe now that we've had that presentation, go back and look at it, because there's some pieces that kind of, I think, fit together really well, understanding, like, for example, there have been so few duplexes built, you know, in the last several years, and this, you know, we're trying to kind of address the capacity for that to increase and that kind of thing. So just wanted to call that out, because it's also very nicely laid out and very well-done and very pretty. So that makes it
Digestible.
I was just going to say, it makes it more digestible. So thank you for that.
For future work sessions next, when we meet again, we're going to have our budget discussion, so any priorities that council has, that'll be on our next work session. So I wanted to give a heads up. Okay, we're going to move on to August 10th. And then I know we have the Bowhunt program update, so I'm not sure who wants to kind of go over IP-5 memo?
We're looking at Rachel's chair.
I was just going to say that First Assistant Sue Dulick is here, and I know she's present, because I know Rachel normally takes charge of this topic and is unable to be here. So I know that Sue would be happy to answer any questions you have, I don't think she has a presentation.
Thanks.
Sorry.
Hello. As, as Eric said, my, my name is Sue Dulick, and I can answer, I think, any questions. But to date, the Bowhunt has just occurred on private property, and staff is looking to expand that a little bit on some parcels of public property in light of trying to call more of, of the deer. And what staff is suggesting is, is kind of twofold, is this year to, to allow it on the covered wagon drive parcel down in the southern part of, of Iowa City. And in the future, notifying council via a similar memo that this is, we're going to go on this piece of public property this fall or this winter. And if that would be acceptable to council, a resolution will come at one of the next meetings that will authorize sort of limited use of, of meetings that will authorize sort of limited use of, of public property and via then, including this one for this winter, and then in the future via a memo to council updating them or on the proposal, or on the proposed use of a particular use of public property. So staff is just looking for some direction if that would be acceptable to council, will bring back to you in the next meeting or the meeting following that.
If I may. One of the things that I remember from previous seasons were people actually being quite, the public, writing in with concerns about safety, honestly, like in Hickory Hill Park by Terry Trueblood, additionally with corpses left, you know, it can be rather disturbing for families and whatnot. So I guess what I would be interested in, and I don't know if this is outside scope, but certainly as a correlative, to have a pretty comprehensive, to use Counselor Burgess's plan, sense of, of what kind of public announcements, like, how would this be broadcast that these particular public areas would be done? And I know that that is in place, so I'm not faulting that, but I think that, given that there is the suggestion of it, of expanding, and particularly, I know where Covered Wagon is, I mean, it's pretty populous, so it would, I'd be very interested in knowing what the kind of precautions would be to alert the public to, to this happening, and that that would be sort of simultaneous to it coming before us, so that we can consider the two things at the same time.
Sure. And just for, to remind council, there are limits on where one can hunt in terms of how close it can be to a property line and how large a lot has to be to begin with as well. But sure, they, we'll work on the resolution, including public notification and how that will be increased when we're on public property.
Yeah, and I think along with the, the policy limitations that are in place about where adjacent to residences and those kinds of things that it said, I think if we can have a diagram that shows what that would mean in this particular case, so the, the image in our packet outlined just the edges of that parcel, which does make it look like we're talking about close to those homes, but we're not. So I think being able to show people, you know, if you were standing in Weatherby Park, here's what that would mean as far as the, the portion of that lot that could be used.
Sure.
Thank you.
Right, that was, that was my concern, because Weatherby Park is very close to that area, and, and Covered Wagon, we've just approved developments, it's just really like developing like wildfire, especially, you know, since we've improvement called it to Boulevard, so a lot of homes there, and would these homeowners have to approve of, also approve of having that site so close to their homes or, or not?
Well, that's not...
I mean, currently, we don't have, like, if, if the landowner says they can hunt on my yard, they just have to notify their, their neighbors, but they don't need permission necessarily.
They don't need the permission because the, the hunt must occur a certain distance from the property line, and so...
Because I don't have any problem with that, I do have a problem with the other kinds of parks, like Hickory, you mentioned those, those kinds of really public, more public kinds of park areas where, where children would be or people would be jogging or biking or something, so, but this area doesn't look like it would, it doesn't have a trail running through it or anything like that, so.
Yeah, actually, notating the public access to those public parcels would be really helpful too, because I don't think this one really has it.
No.
Which helps, in my opinion.
True. I was, I mean, in addition to sort of the safety part of it, I also think it's just, it's, you know, it's proactive to be able to say, we want to make sure that you know that this is where this is at, and, you know.
I'm not sure that, I mean, from the list of, it looks like the letters and the complaints that we'd gotten, it didn't seem like there were a lot of folks in that neighborhood though that were complaining about the population of the deer. I know there's a lot of them on the east side a lot in the Longfellow neighborhood, and I see, I saw two today, in fact, just on the sidewalk trotting along on Sheridan Avenue, a couple of deer. But those homes are so close together, like we were talking about earlier with the developments, that there wouldn't, there's not a good place for a hunter to perch on a tree, and there's just no good place in that neighborhood for a bow hunt or even a sharpshooter hunt, so I don't know what we could do about, I mean, that's, it really seems to be increasing in that neighborhood with the creek there and the parks and the trees, but, but this one seems like a more open space, but it didn't seem like we were getting many complaints from, from that neighborhood. I guess we'd have to see.
Do we, anybody have an update on the, working with the DNR to come back at some point in the future with the sharpshooting?
The city manager has written to the, I can't, I think it was the DNR as opposed to the NRC, asking them for some guidance on what to do, because we are going into year four of the Bow Hunt in our five-year plan. And he has not received any response, but presumably in, within the next six to eight months, staff will have to go back and ask to state, so, but, but known.
Thank you.
I can attest way on the, I live on the south side, like, by the diversity market, and in the winter, we have seen upwards of 12 deer in our yard eating our bird seed, so they're, I agree with you, they're everywhere.
They're getting around. Do you have what you need?
I do, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh dear.
Any other items from August 10th? We're going to move on to item number four, University of Iowa Student Government, USG Updates. Hello, hello, and welcome back to school.
Thank you.
Matthew, go ahead. Go ahead and introduce yourself if you like, sorry, my notes are all messed up. Go ahead.
Well, hello, councilors, it's really exciting to be back. I only know I went to like one city council session, so my name is Matthew Monsevise, if you don't remember. So, yeah, I spent my summer in my hometown in Ankeny, I worked at Target and Amazon over the summer, and, yeah, but no, I'm excited to be back here, I'm a first-time renter, and, yeah, I'm excited to be more involved and present with USG, so, yeah.
Great, welcome.
Awesome. Yeah, get it out of the way. We now have fancy name tags, so now we're official. Matthews is in the office, but I got mine yesterday. So if any, anyone, including city staff, ever needs to talk to us, don't, don't be afraid. So, yeah, basically, the fall semester starts next Monday, so campus is really busy, everyone's moving in, I tried going on a run this morning and had to like avoid like 30 kids, it's not fun. I said that as if I wasn't one just like two years ago, but, you know, that's, that's the perks of being, well, a junior. Tons of, on Iowa, events are going on, USG has been hosting a couple as well, so we're trying to get all of the new students familiarized with campus, the certain resources we have. Some of the great things that we just had, we've had the food pantry and the clothing closet moved downstairs in the IMU, and so now that, instead of being in the Iowa House Hotel area, they're more in a central spot, so either members of the community and/or university members can like actually come in and get professional clothing or donated food stuff, and I think it's just an amazing idea. And it looks much nicer than what the original places were. We'll be setting up emails here very soon, so expect an email to your Iowa City email to basically have that set up, starting, hopefully, we want to have at least one with all of you individually each semester, so we'll plan on one for fall and we'll plan on one for spring as well. Last year was a little bit different because of me coming in so late and everything, but this year, we're going to have it kind of getting back on track. And I think that's all we have, so thank you guys so much.
Great. Thank you, and welcome back again. All right, we're on to item number five, council updates on assigned boards, commissions, Hearing none. We are adjourned, and I will see you back at 6:00 PM for our formal meeting.